Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please join us as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call.
Prime Miller.
Here.
Ness here. Heglin.
Yes.
Yes. Spider.
Here.
Mayewski.
Here. Brings us to the public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
She can go first.
About something that's not on the agenda. Okay, Janie, you want to come forward and tell us your name and address then? What do you have to say?
I'm Janie O'Connor, 14682 Oak Hill Lane, Scandia. I just wanted to tell the city council that Cycling Scandia now has a board of directors. We had our first organizational meeting last month, and our first real meeting is this coming Saturday. And we have a new organizational chart that I want to share with you. And that's all I have to say. Two people from the Park and Rec Committee also serve on our board, and they are Terry Gorham and Carol Schwinghammer, so we'll know what each other is doing.
Nice job, as always, Janie.
Thank you. Hi.
Anybody have any questions for Janie?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. If someone else wanted to come forward?
Yes.
Welcome. You tell us your name and address and...
John House, 22729 St. Crye Trail North, Scandia. Back again. Wind in the pines, trespassing, moving your stuff, tearing our signs down. I was down there yesterday or Saturday. Still trails going through, even in the winter. Just wondering when you guys are going to start taking it a little more seriously because it's like the fourth time I've been back.
What do you suggest we do?
Shut it down.
Shut the park down?
Shut it down or else put some serious fences up or something because we keep... We've put up fences twice. They cut them down. We put up our signs three times a year. They tear them down. At least two, three times a year. We're doing it every year. They're coming through, someone gets hurt. Who's liable? That's my question. Who's liable since I've been here four times?
Which is an interesting que... I mean, I... How much... People trespass. At what point does it...
When you have a thousand people coming through a year.
At what point does it become the responsibility of the city? Or... Because there's trespassing that goes on everywhere.
Or people going on private property without permission. What order is that following?
I would say, I guess, you know, I haven't done the research or thought into this since we last talked about it, so I don't know if I have an answer for that right now, but, you know, it's... You have trespassing on private property in other areas too.
Right.
So if we can figure out, you know, a thousand people was...
I would say there...
We need some facts on that, I would say, for sure.
There's... It's a constant. Every single weekend, soon as it gets nice in the winter, it's all... I mean, I chased 13 people out in two hours during deer hunting season without any orange on.
How would shutting it down, what would stop people from just trespassing across the park?
Because you lead them right back to the...
What would stop people from trespassing right across the park and then down to your land?
There's no parking spot.
I'm not 100% sure that would do the job.
It would do probably 90% of the work. Where are they going to park on 95?
Did those people that are in deer season have guns or just walk in?
No. They're just wandering through. I mean, we put our effort forward to stop this. If I had a piece of land where they're coming in and doing stuff on your property, you would make us stop it. If they were coming in and wrecking your stuff because they're coming off of our land and my trails, you would make us stop. You would find a way to get us to stop it. Don't, 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 seriously, because that's, that's... Don't.
I don't know that we would.
I don't know that we would either.
It's just like parking along a city road and walking in some private property. There's a parking...
If we live next to your land and we were consistently destructing your property by coming out...
Brandon, you got any thoughts?
Yeah. I'm half in agreeance with him because everybody that I'm dealing with is not from in town. I've cited numerous, numerous people on it. Repeat offenders I don't have. So blanket citing hasn't worked the last two years because there isn't any breaks and it wouldn't be closing the park. It'd be just closing the lot. Because I do get drinking, I do get drugs, and then the trespassing and the damage. So it's not just hiking. It's a lot more. They leave glass bottles. It's... They're littering along the way. I'll find beer cans. So it's... They're using the park for what it's not intended for. It's an SNA, so it's made to be used for hiking and viewing nature while they're using it as a river access. So to stop it, it would not to close the park land, but just to close the lot. If they still want to access the Wind in the Pines, the city property, they have Falls Creek, which is a lot smaller lot, and I don't think it will be used as much. It would drastically cut off the people using it. And the people who still wanted to use the park, what's it intended for, as an SNA to hike, they can still access it through the DNR land, just like they access the DNR land through Wind in the Pines. So it would help. I don't know how it can be done or what the city can do for it. I know when I... They did it in Forest Lake at the skate park there. They had a skate park at the Old Township Hall, and there was vandalism, there was drinking, there was narcotics, and they closed the park. They took all the skate stuff out of there, and it solved the problem. So that's different. It's not public land, it's not hiking, but it's city property where the city saw an issue and they closed it. And this wouldn't be closing the lot again, or closing the land, it would just be closing off the access point.
The car access point?
Correct.
Basically. Because people could still potentially just walk in for a night.
Yep.
What things have been done, you know?
Pardon me?
What, you know, what things have been done? We've done?
Yeah.
What have we done?
What have we done there?
Done a bunch of stuff, too. Well, we posted it, we tried putting up all the natural brush. They pulled out our signs, they threw our signs down the hill. We probably spent, I don't know, probably about 80 to 100 hours back there last year trying to do different things. Just doesn't seem to work.
I know we had the nature park signs, and that's the...
We also...
The DNR to remove those, and that was done to try to make it less obvious.
Right. Along 95. And then we also posted two more signs saying no river access right at the entrance to the park where they do park.
Sounds like even if you put up a real heavy duty fence, they're going to rip it down the way it sounds. It just sounds like they're relentless.
It's, you know, I'm catching... I mean, I know he's catching some different people because he's probably there during the week a little bit more, I'm there on the weekends a little more, probably, right?
Yeah, the summer, well, on the Friday and Saturday nights, I'm down there when I work, so.
Right, exactly. See, I'm there during the week. I mean, I'm there during the weekends a lot, and I'm catching adults, people like you. Not you, but I mean, people like you guys. You know, it's in general, it's not people trying to destruct, but they're walking through. It's like, "Did you see the signs?" "Well, yeah."
So if they come through, through the... In the other direction?
Falls Creek?
Through Falls Creek?
Yep.
They're not going to be trespassing on his land?
They could. They potentially could. The lot is so much smaller. It's not as known or advertised. A lot of people don't even know it's there.
It's a harder walk.
But the people... Yeah, there's not a trail, a designated trail. The trail that they're using has been there for 30, 40 years, and it's been used for a long time, so it's a beaten down path. The people who would go to Falls Creek to use it would actually be using and know... They'd be using the SNA as an SNA because those are the only people that look for that. So they wouldn't specifically know that it would be there.
We have people going on our boat, doing stuff down there. I mean, you know, I mean, they're walking right down. My question is, is at what point, where do we go with this? Because, you know, I mean, some minor things that have been tried are not working. And we can sit there and put fences up all day long and they keep cutting them. I mean, and supposedly, we're not supposed to be able to put up, you know, barbed wire type of fences or something, something that can hurt people or... I don't know. It was when we were talking to the DNR a long time ago about this. So it's just became an issue that isn't going away. When you have people like Tom Worth or whatever down in Marin posting it on Facebook and stuff like that, it doesn't help also.
What's posted on this one?
Oh, he's...
He backed off on that quickly. He's got lots and lots of bad...
But it's the second time he's done it in the last year. So he just did it a couple of weeks ago again. And then he did it again. I mean, he's just going to keep on doing it. He backs off, but then he comes back.
What does he do?
Typical. I would just say how disappointed he is he can't walk to the river because it's private property and he should be able to do it essentially.
I'm kind of inclined to agree with Mr. House. He's been putting up with a lot of stuff. He came to us a year ago, talked to us...
And the year before.
...and said he did something down. I wasn't here two years ago, so he told me.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's been...
We've tried a lot of stuff. The sheriff's tried a lot of stuff. Nothing seems to be working. Last thing I want to do is close down the park, but we can't seem to deal with it, so...
I mean, I'll sit there and write tickets if they allow me to.
What kind of fence are they cutting?
But...
What kind of fence are they cutting?
It's just a single line, but I've... We've done it where we've looped it like four or five times, and they just cut it. I mean, it's...
What if we put up like a cyclone fence?
Well, Adam, what did you put up, the way you're fencing?
Well, we just used the natural wood and branches from the area, so we cut down...
Tried to block the trail?
Yeah, cut down extra branches, used all the stuff from the storms that went through.
But then whose fence is it with the posts that are kind of cross bridge the...
You know, I don't know if it's that...
Them are our posts.
Those are yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we had put the fence up several times, and then that actually ran all the way down to the stream and up and over.
Right, because I know Adam tried to block it above that where the trail actually is supposed to loop back.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. We tried to cut it off early before they even get to your property.
Right, no, I get that. It was, yeah, and it's... It's, you know, I understand what you're trying to do there, and it's...
Yeah.
People know. That's the problem.
It'll just be interesting to see if we did... I think the thing that bothers me is, you know, it's no disrespect at all, but the idea that we would cut down a cit... Or close down a city park because of an issue with the private landowners having. I mean, it just... We're denying, we would deny access to everyone in the city to this property. Now, it's...
More people are going down to the river than going through your park.
As Brandon is explaining, excuse me, as Brandon is explaining it or talking about it, the idea that potentially what would be, would be closing down would be the parking area, that to me is not as... Or makes more sense, or is not as impalatable, I guess.
That's the first step, probably.
Yeah.
I would agree. Close down the parking.
Parking area.
See if that...
It's not the park, but it's the parking area that we would be closing.
It couldn't be signs.
Now that it would be interesting to see, very honestly, if they don't figure out a way to get around that, too.
Well, I think that's the first step. Close the parking, monitor it. But something has to be done. We can't be harming private property owners just because we can't control what's going on.
Yeah, and the question that was well put is, what if someone gets injured on the private property after trespassing onto it with us knowing about the situation? You know, who balances the liability in that aspect? If you're, you know, if you fall in the city park, you know, it's one thing. You know, if there's something hazardous the city knows about that doesn't do anything about in the city park, then you can have some liability attached, but usually not. But this is a little bit different. So I think that'd be a discussion point, that starting on that front to see, does anybody get around that, or is that a solution that we can live with? So that's the overarching liability question we have.
So who would take steps to do that? Is that something Adam would have to put together a plan for? What do we do? We've got to remove posts, got to remove signs, got to block the entrance. What happens?
My thought would be, if we want to close the park, you put a gate...
We don't want to close the park. We don't want to close the parking lot.
Yeah, close the parking lot, then you have to put up a gate there right at the fence entrance, but it's got to be back several feet in order to be outside of the right of way for the state highway. So it'll be just up the hill a little bit. It'd probably still allow a vehicle to be parked there, but we could maybe put another obstruction there with, you know, if the highway department gives us authority to do it.
I think it's more about starting to determine if they can't go up there and park. And they're, you know, realistically, I mean, they might get one car in there, but they're not going to park along 95 because that's not going to be allowed.
Because they can't drive to 220th, though.
They can't access it from 220th. It's a private road to the north, so they couldn't access it from 220th. They could park on 95. There's nothing illegal about that.
But that would become an issue very quickly in the summer.
Yep. There's an SNA down in Bayport where they park right on 95. It's a greater shoulder to a state DNR down there. Me and Neil looked at that a while ago, but...
And realistically, people could get hurt down there. I mean, it's not like it's just a walking path, so...
So this has started since the snow has started to go back now? Is that when... Now they're starting to melt?
This never stops.
So people have been parking in that park, and do we plow that in the wintertime?
Yeah.
I mean, this never stops. I mean, this is... I mean, this goes on. I mean, sure, it slows down some, and then it just picks up. It goes, you know, and then in the summer, it'll pick up more and then...
All right. Adam, can you come back with a plan for us to look at for the work session on how we might deal with this, what we might do with that parking area or the...
Our alternatives for blocking out the parking for now?
Well, can we make a decision tonight to do that?
Well, how about, do we want to make a decision tonight?
I guess I am. You know, if people aren't listening and they're not doing what they're...
I mean, they're tearing your signs down, too.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, we've spent enough money on signs here.
If that's the people that are using that park, the heck with them, yeah.
And it's people that want to go to the river that are doing it.
Should we have them added to the agenda, then?
Yeah. I think instead of doing it right now, add it in the regular course tonight if that's what the council would like to do. At least for discussion matters, and then you can vote on it tonight. We can supplement that with a plan at the work session or what have you.
Do you want to take my number or something so you can get back to me or talk to somebody about this?
Sure, Brandon, between Brandon and us.
I'll advise you what's going on. I'll give you the rule.
Yep, so, and...
All right, thank you. We'll have discussion now.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will.
Yep.
I guess...
Anyone?
Oh, we're going to talk about later, right?
What?
I'm going to talk about later.
Do you add it to the agenda?
Do we get that as an agenda item?
Yeah. What agenda item?
We'll add it.
Add it.
For proof. I got you. All right. So anyone else who'd like to speak about something not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Thank you. We'll close then the public forum.
Thank you.
Thank you. We come to approval of the agenda. We're going to add the school raffle, okay, to the consent agenda with the extra proviso that Andy added. And you just put that to the consent agenda, right?
They have to have a permit for the school raffle?
Yeah.
We have to get approval for a gambling permit.
Does it involve money?
Everything involves money.
It's a gambling permit.
It's a gambling permit. We have to approve it.
Always have. I think you've done it every year. Okay, so we can add to the consent agenda. So that'd be item J.
Do we need to vote on that, or do we just...
Well, we're going to vote on the consent agenda.
What to add to modify the agenda?
I'm... That's what... Yes, that's the motion I'm making now, is to add that to the agenda, and then when we get to the consent agenda, we can vote on it or not.
And then did you want to add on?
And then we're going to add on also, not to the consent agenda, to discussion, which I guess would be M?
Yep.
The Wind in the Pines Park. Okay. Anything else to add to the agenda or modifications? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve the unit agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on that? Or else they go to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There are no public hearings this evening, which brings us to the Park and Recreation Committee report. Terry, welcome.
Mayor and city council and staff, good evening. One item for your consideration tonight is the... Another thing for us to discuss is the tennis court reconstruction. We have $40,000 in the capital improvement fund for resurfacing and repainting the tennis courts over here. We also have been looking at that. The PRC has been looking at that and to possibly expand the pickleball courts that we have. So what we have in front of us is a couple of options, what we can do. We have the option of simply doing the reconstruction of the tennis courts as they are today with an overlay striping on them so that we could, so we could play pickleball on those tennis courts. The PRC has also taken a look at a couple of other options for that space where we would keep one tennis court. And option, one of the options would be to put two separate pickleball courts on the west end, that's closer to the community center here, and then also put striping on the tennis court, so we would have up to three pickleball courts there. And then another option that we have is to leave the tennis courts, and we could actually fit four pickleball courts in that spot where we have one tennis court right now. So because there's an urgency to get the bids out there, get the bids out, get them back, and get, you know, get the reconstruction done so we can still have a little bit of a season this year, we're proposing in your packet here, I'm assuming you have all that in front of you, that if you look at the number of options, I kind of summarized them there, but the option that we like is to seek, is the fifth one, is to seek proposals for the concurrent configuration of the two tennis courts with overlay striping for pickleball, but also when we go out to bid, bid it for the single court and two pickleball courts and the single court and four pickleball courts.
So we would come back and look at all three options after we know the cost, in other words?
Right. Because we, you know, I think that there could be, you know, some real over the thumb estimates of if we were to go to all, you know, the single tennis court and four pickleball courts, it might increase our costs by $10,000 to $15,000. But that's really rough. And so let's we'll get out there and get those estimates, and then the PRC can take another look at it and come back with a final recommendation, obviously aware of what our budget constraints would be.
Okay. You have questions for Terry?
So I guess we would seek your approval of that fifth option there on your materials.
I may come up with accept option five. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, and that brings us to the planning commission.
And I'm doing, we're sharing the night off, so I was at the meeting. And we were discussing about lots being created. I'm sorry, I'm not ready to talk yet.
No, go ahead. I just had, my head had to do a turnaround and share it.
Oh.
Go for it.
So there'd be some changes to be considered for the park dedication requirements, and actually, this was, we, you know, sent this back to the planning commission with, you know, some ideas of what we wanted. And essentially, what it amounts to is that 20 acre lots that are subdivided now are not exempt from the park dedication, and they all get paid upfront. There was still some question about whether, you know, they could wait till they were actually, you know, they were building permits and variances and that, but it's kind of an administrative issue, you know, if it happens five years down the road or whatever. So they're just, you know, deciding to do it now. So the only really changes on it...
I think we have one more that I forgot to mention to you.
Okay.
The one down here where we deleted, where the developer may request a deviation from the requirements.
Right, yeah, and that's here. Yep, yep. So the lots created are 20 acres or larger in size with at least 500 feet of road frontage should be required to comply with the park dedication. And then down below, they just, you know, we requested that they change the wording that a developer may request a deviation from the requirements based on anticipated impact, et cetera. And Sherry said they all asked for it anyhow regardless, and they did leave language in there that...
Specifically for that one purpose.
Yeah, for that one.
For low to moderate income, where we could consider it.
That's about it.
Okay. Questions for Sherry? Chris?
There you go. Nice.
Well, okay, what are then? You are looking for a...
I move with Dr. Ornance, number 194, amending ordinance number 122.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that moves to our resolution approving the summary publication.
I approve resolution 03201801 approving summary publication of ordinance 184.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Which brings us to our staff reports. Building official report.
Chuck has his report that's included in the packet. I think the one thing I would note is, year to date, we're up to three new home permits. Continuing, continuing to move.
Very good.
But at this pace, we're not going to make $270,000 this year.
You can do a storm dance.
Don't say it.
I don't think insurance companies would appreciate it.
So we had one last month, and we got three this month. Okay. Any other questions for, on that? Otherwise, moving on to Brandon.
Mayor, council, evening.
Over the last month, we had two horn arrests and a DWI on St. Cry Trail. With those big snowfalls, we got a bunch of snowmobile concerns with private property damaging trees and then up at the elementary school, they're driving in their fields up there. So we had a lot of extra patrol from our Water Parks and Trails Unit that were up on the trails in this area. And then I, actually last week I attended a CIT training, which is a crisis intervention training. All the officers in the county are scheduled to go through it, which is kind of a neat, neat training dealing with different individuals and anybody in crisis. So that was kind of a fun training to go through, a different way of kind of copping in a sense, so. And then I guess since I'm up here, unless you want me to, just later on, do you have any questions about Winning the Pines that I'm up here? Otherwise I can come back up when you guys discuss it after.
I guess I was, I do now that you mentioned the mayor, and it's kind of deals with what she was talking about. If you own a piece of property next to a city road or a city park, isn't it, there's some responsibility that you keep people off your property? You know, if they're next to me walking in my property, you know, the first thing I do, I'd take care of it. I'd put a fence up, I'd do something, now isn't there?
So the, I guess I'm looking at it in the aspect of, from one property to another, I guess I look at like, the property is there for, and it was designed for recreating. So I guess you could use like Wild Mountain. The property's there, it's advertised to recreate at, and now there's people at that facility trespassing and damaging property owners. So I, it would, in my aspect, it would come back to the owner that is advertising the property to come and recreate on it who are not following the rules of the lot that they're on.
So you're saying that he would have no responsibility, he doesn't have?
He has a responsibility and he's doing that.
Okay.
If he didn't have, if he wasn't doing anything, I see where he's at. He's put up signs, they tear him down, he's put up fences, he tears them down. It would be one thing if he didn't do anything because you have to have your property posted, a wooded lot in Minnesota for, to me, to even trespass, if they're not told by the homeowner. So he's taking those steps, so I think with going back to the owner of the property who is advertising to come and use it, I can, I could see where it would be back on us now.
What is it, if you're on a road, if your private property is off of a road, it's a public road.
Yep.
And you don't, you can't, if you're the private, private property owner and people are coming off that road onto your property, you don't say, you've got the responsibility for keeping people off my property, public road, or city, or county, or state?
Right. And that, I guess I don't know on, I do understand your standpoint there.
That was, I mean, one of the questions that I would have for Andy to answer is, what is our responsibility? Because it's, I mean, although if we, I would be more in favor of doing something if we are having issues, the issues you're talking about with the littering and the broken bottles and the drugs, I mean, if that's going on, that's one issue.
Yep.
But I really, other than this, trying as hard as we can to keep people on.
Yep.
Property, I just don't know, I mean, I just.
You know, we have bought, you know, special signs that say, you know, you know, it posted our boundaries, private property, no trespassing, violators will be prosecuted, you know, we've done that, but those signs last for a couple of days and then they're, you know, and they're taken down. And there's only so much that we can do. I know Adam, as he said, he's posted no river access. We've tried to, even on the signs at the park, it was kind of misleading as to what was there. And Adam went and, you know, clarified the signs to paint out to make where the trails are obvious. And, you know, it's just continual.
Yeah, right, and the, the two ways I would respond, and your example, Mayor, the, I mean, to me, the public road is a means for transportation from point A to point B, whereas the park that we have now is a recreation goal or that people use for recreation. So it's not really the city's responsibility to keep people off of a public road from trespassing on private property because it's just not, that's not the purpose of, of the road. I mean, you might get trespassers who are going off the road and going into the woods or something, but I think that's more of a minor thing versus a park where they go off the park boundaries, sometimes intentionally.
Yep.
And the second thing is that, I try to restate the gentleman's question as far as, okay, the question is liability, what if someone gets hurt and the city knows about this and doesn't do anything? But clearly you have done many things and so, and they haven't been enough to stop. So, you know, I don't want to discuss in open session, I suppose, what the risk of liability might be. I don't, I haven't done that analysis, but I think that, you know, you have tried almost everything you can do besides closing the parking lot. And now you, now you're to that next level of analysis.
I guess back on that situation of the road, we have done that in the past down in Norrell, East and West Boot Lake. I might be saying the names wrong, but it was a problem of trespassing on the lake, on, on the private property to get on the lake, so they actually put no parking be, on the road because it was creating issues with the landowners on each side. Then you could walk, once you've legally parked, to access through the right of way, they couldn't do anything about that. But when, I guess it is, public property, the road, when it falls onto the city, that's something that we have done to kind of make an example, I guess.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, we're going to discuss this later, but what if you had, just out of the, what if you had a private person that owns a property and city property next to them and the city didn't want anybody on their property, but this private guy kept going on their property and squirrel hunting and whatever? Is it the city's responsibility to keep them off that property?
I think we, so in that aspect, at Big Marine Park, there's only so much of Big Marine Park that is actually open to the public, so.
So if a private person goes on that, whose responsibility to keep them off that park is it?
So it came, it comes back to the county then.
The park?
Yep.
So you're flipping this with the landowner down here, I guess that, that's the part I don't understand, but.
I guess it's when.
Well, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah. There's a lot of scenarios.
We actually had that issue at Goose Lake for a while.
Yeah, that's.
You have the Cherry chair.
Is that what that is?
Cherry chair number two.
Shrinking. I have my chin on the.
Doing a Kilroy thing?
All right, thank you, Brandon. Mike?
Standing meeting, huh?
Yeah. Keep order, keep order.
You have our activity reports. One thing is, is our bottles for our SCBA's came in yesterday. We've been wondering where they are, where they are, they says, well, we're, got a really big order, it may be May or June, and all of a sudden they showed up yesterday. But that's just the bottles, we don't have the packs or the masks yet. But it's, it's a good thing, we were thinking the bottles were going to take till May or June, is what they were telling us, and they arrived yesterday, so, all except for one bottle is backordered. So, anyway, that's just some additional news that isn't on this report. Otherwise, anyone have any other questions?
How did the fire work out?
Went well, we had a light turnout due to the weather.
Weather, weather.
You know, it started snowing early and kept snowing, and I think scared a lot of people away. But as far as proceeds, we came out pretty close to where we normally do, actually, so.
It was a lighter turnout, but there were a lot of people.
There was still quite a bit of people there, and I think people saw that it was a lighter turnout, spent more knowing that it was a lighter turnout, so.
Better chance of winning.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, within my staff updates on the first bullet point conference of plan update, there's one correction to make. I had the public hearing dated April 3rd there, so actually it'll be May 5th, or May, May 2nd, 2018. Just kind of moving down. I provided a bullet point, just, and I see that Neil had a lot of the same items too, as with some of the action items within the capital. Obviously, if you want that link, that's easy to copy and paste, I can send that forward too, and so, trying to type that in. But there's some interesting bills and that could potentially, you know, affect public infrastructure. One is, you know, with the wireless bill, application fees for larger wireless equipment at $3,000. You know, my concern with that is oftentimes we see applications that are very far from completes, that haven't gone through this proper structural stuff, so, you know, those costs escalate pretty easily when you're dealing with applicants like that. When T-Mobile and Verizon will take a little bit and you get what a little bit delivers, right? So you go through a lot of comments and revisions, back and forth, and so, you know, that's something that, you know, in order to continue to protect cities or communities, you know, I can see some of this stuff being, wants to be mounted on potentially, you know, structures or buildings or in the event that the city ever owned a larger tower, that, you know, you would come into play in those situations. But obviously with the advancement of wireless, you know, that's only going to be more common moving forward and what type of applications you receive. So just wanted you to kind of wear that. I would see the next one was something you'd be more consistently would deal with if it was approved. That's, you know, there's a bill right now that requires a release of the retains before final completion of construction projects. Oftentimes, that's our only leverage left in a project to get a contractor to finish the job. If that were to go away and you had to pay that before final completion of the project, you know, you just lose that ability sometimes to, or leverage at the end of projects and, you know, not often do we have to get strict on some stuff, you know, you typically have good contractors, but every once in a while we have a situation where things just didn't go right.
Do we know why that's being proposed?
Because a lot of subcontractors are not getting paid by the prime. And that's, you know, something that I've always coordinated pretty closely, you know, that's why we, at the beginning of pre-con, we ask, who are your subs? So during projects and bigger projects, especially the street project, I'll be in communication with those subs, making sure they're getting paid. Otherwise then we'll have some, you know, conversations moving forward before we get to those end stages. But sometimes these big contractors come in and bid tons of work, low bid, not making a lot of money, but got to keep cash flow going and, but not paying your subs. And, you know, that's where a lot of issues arise and so.
You know, I think the other issue that, you know, just from, from looking at it and looking at some of the text in the bill, that there are some cities that have held on to retention, you know, for multiple years, you know, which also causes the problem on the other side too, in terms of, you know, cash flow.
Or an instance here, you know, you have a contractor bid a lot of work. He thought he was going to be finishing your project coming August, he thought he was going to do final restoration September. Well, he doesn't show back up for the job till October. Gets it done, then he's going to jump into a restoration now in October, fine, you got liquidated damages, so another discussion. Okay, then he comes, does the seeding, well, it snows. What do you do? You don't want to release the retains, right? Because you have no idea if it's going to perform and grow. So, you know, that's why it's important for us to not support this bill because I think it just provides a safety net for the city on projects. Because there are so many situations with contractors that things could be going good or bad, you know. They could be going good, they bid just so much work and a little bit, and thus they got so much work and it just doesn't get finished in the schedules that you've required.
Do you have this in your report too?
Yes.
About this? Something you could talk about.
So there's just a couple points that potentially could directly impact the city, so I just wanted to bring those up. And then I said I would give a verbal update to the Mindaw project that's on. They'll be mobilizing a bash plant here into April. And really how I see it might affect the city of Scandia residents who are commuters up to 97 and down 35. Shouldn't see too many impacts this year as majority of the work will be kind of offline in that area. And then the resurfacing of 35, both northbound and southbound will be from 97 up to Highway 8. But they will be starting to construct the new 97 bridge, the north side of it, right on, right parallel with the existing bridge. So the current 97 bridge will remain open in 18. You'll see a lot of activity on the north side. And then in 19, that bridge will get removed so you can finish the southern portion of that, but. So that's what I got, if there's any questions.
We had questions about the, I don't know if this is for you or for the, maybe for the city in general regarding the comprehensive plan update. How do we, can we make it easier to get there on our website, the updates? Because right now you have to go to under City Services, which most people are not going to look for a comprehensive plan update under City Services. And then it's, once you get there, there's a lot there, but it just takes a long time to get there.
We can get it more directly.
Okay. And then I also had a question about the, the pieces of the plan that are out there for people to look at because they're, they're accessible to people if they go, but they had, in order to look at them, you have to go through the Planning Commission agenda, basically. And again, if, if people knew that they were there, so instead of just getting to the Latin, because it causes people to think they're not seeing anything to the last minute when you have the open house and then you can, you get all this presented to you because there's a lot there. If we have a way for them to link to those sites and the updates that the, with the understanding that these are still in process and Planning Commission is.
Or at least the ones that are presented.
Yes. So right now, there's really no route for people to get to them unless they go through that calendar and going back to January under Planning Commission. So is there a way we can do that as well?
I can talk to Jane about, because, see what they can put on their website and then we can get a, you know, we get that link to their.
Okay.
Or see if we can get those on ours.
Okay.
They're on ours, but it's, it's really difficult to get, walk through the bases.
To get them, yeah, that's what. Well, this is, well, I'll talk about this later. I have another one that doesn't have anything to do with it. I thought of it because of what I was talking about, comprehensive plan. Okay, anything else for Ryan? Thank you very much, Ryan. And that brings us then to our legal report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor of the Council, not too much to add. On Thursday, I'm, myself and a colleague will be at the Minnesota Clarkson Finance Officers Association exhibit in Bloomington, so we are meeting a lot of cities there and we have good free stuff to give away. And secondly, in my role as the White Bear Lake City Attorney, I've been quite busy and Scandia is lucky that you're out of the 5 hour radius of White Bear Lake because we've, you've, you've watched in the news about all of the maneuverings with that. Where that stands right now is the, there was a bunch of post-trial motions to the Ramsey County District Court Judge who happened to retire on the day after the massive opinion came out. And she came out of retirement to hear those post-trial motions, basically asking her to change her mind and, which I'm sure she won't do, but she hasn't ruled on that yet. And then in the meantime, you have DNR trying to process permit amendments for groundwater permits for municipalities. And sort of up in the air because people have asked for a stay of that Ramsey County Court opinion, White Bear Lake has asked for a stay. And that hasn't been ruled one way or another yet. There's also legislation that has now been introduced in the legislature trying to impose a stay through the legislative process of the Ramsey County Court, really before it goes up to the court appeals, so. Luckily for Scandia, you're a part of the northeast, I can't remember what they call that.
Northeast Groundwater Management.
Yeah. So, but it's just worth giving an eye on because is there a statewide process or imposition coming down the pike the next few years, so. I'm quite busy trying to keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Brandon?
I have a question on the previous item for Ryan. Are, are you involved in the striping where we're part of the Washington County contract? That's just Public Works? My question is that, why do we no longer use the reflective type paint?
Do you want to talk about that?
For the roads?
We do striping on the roads, we are not using reflective paint anymore, or it seems like it.
Yeah, it should be the reflective paint.
Maybe it's just old that it's just no longer.
Reflecting.
Reflecting.
Yeah.
So what's being redone now as part of the Washington County contract, is it reflective paint?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Yeah, that's coming up. Right.
No.
I believe it was on the consent agenda.
Oh, it was on the consent agenda.
Just participate with the county.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no problem, I thought it was still going to be discounted. I'm glad you brought it up. All right, that brings us to then Adam.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I've submitted my staff report. Recorded and written down some of the snow events that we had that we went through. Probably the most interesting thing on the whole report is actually Listlet Station 1, we finally got the pumps replaced in there after being put off and put off. And the hours that the pumps are now running are approximately anywhere from one hour to two and a half hours right now. We're only four readings into it, but that seems to be the rate. The old rate from last year was about five and a half hours for one pump and two hours for the other pump. So it just goes to show how much blow-by there was. And before, we were able to replace the last two pumps, it was down to one pump and that was running 12 to 14 hours a day. So you can see how much more efficient we've, we've done here, so. I thank you and the city thanks you for approving that change there for us. Any questions?
Nope. Okay, thank you very much, Adam. That moves on to our administrator report. Neil?
The, there are a number of things in here that will, I just wanted to reference that we ended up going into the work session agenda. We do have a bond rating call next Monday with Standard and Poor's on the debt we're planning on issuing. And we, our auditors completed their work, fieldwork earlier in the month and I think we have all the final adjustments in. And where we ended up for the year is our revenues primarily due to local government assistance that we received, but mainly building permits. We were over $300,000 over what our budgeted revenues were. And then on the expenditure side, we were $130,000 under budgeted revenues, mostly fire department and public works. So, you know, where we had for 2018, the transfer, you know, we had projected a transfer of $400,000 over to the capital fund, or actually 300 to the capital fund, 100 to parks, I should correct myself. That will, you know, we would definitely have the funds to make those transfers, so. We had a good year and it'd be nice at the, you know, the bond rating call to, you know, have that information because I think, you know, going into this year, we're carrying over a fund balance. Our policy says 50% and we're carrying over, because we've had this good year, nearly 80%. Obviously that's going to go down, but I mean, that money, it's going to go down because it's going to go into capital funds, which is a good thing. The other thing in here, I think of note, you know, our, you know, the kind of the update on the, you know, the Gateway Trail Bill, that's working its way through, what was the original bill? It's been split into two separate bills. One of which, the mayor and I testified before the Agricultural Policy Committee of the House on, that's been referred to a committee in the Senate. But that, that, at that Agricultural Policy Committee, they, you know, kind of split the ad preserve designation issue with the bonding issue. So now those bills have both been through, now there's like two separate bills going through the legislature. In the Senate, there, the hearing on that is, was, is to the Agricultural World Development Housing Policy Committee. They had meetings scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday, but I just checked those agendas and those are not on there. Interestingly enough, for the retention on public, on public contracts, the, it was passed on the Senate side and there's a hearing tomorrow on House side on it. So that seems to be moving forward fairly quickly. And that's pretty much all I have. I think for items for, just to, for prep for the work session will be four. I think for items for, just to, for prep for the work session will be Forest Lake Cable Commission, a contract to provide accounting services, the assessor proposals, and I think finally we'll have something on the fire contract with May Township. May Township's planner has aggregated that information and the town board is reviewing it. So that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Neil?
I have a question.
Yes.
Cable Commission. I know there's two sides to that coin. One is the cable commission is working to extend the contract for accounting services from us.
Yes.
And that's on the fourth. I know they're also working and trying to put together some cost proposals with the assumption that we're leaving the commission, and if so, are, what services could they provide to us for what fees?
Yes, I have Paul prepare that, yes. If I, I can commit to us being ready, I can't commit to Paul being ready, I will try to push him to see whether we can have that discussion also on the fourth.
Okay, so I had to leave the meeting early the other day and they were just getting into that discussion, but I know they have, they were putting together some costs, so we'd have something to help base this our decision on.
Right.
Second.
And even in that regard, you know, we do have, when we approved our budget, you know, we ended up setting up that special revenue fund, assuming that we are going to have that future revenue stream coming in. And then I know Frontier has been in contact with Forest Lake Cable with regard to once they're.
Yeah.
They're able to offer cable services to be able to use the, to link to the PEG channel.
Yeah, there, there were some questions about what they could, couldn't do there, that they were looking into as well. Okay. Second topic, I know we got a letter from the fire chief about when are we going to switch over our agreement with him? Has that, any discussion on that been taking place?
That is in, boy, it was in late February, the chief sent something to all the council members.
Yes.
And I don't think the chief has seen anything, because he wanted that, that will be on the work session agenda. He had not heard from any of the council people, so that's probably a good reminder. I know I had sent quite a bit of stuff. I had asked the chief, have you gotten anything? The answer was no earlier this week, so I, I gave him my download.
I'm not sure I realized that you were asking for it.
I was kind of figuring it was between you two.
Yeah, sorry. I want to.
I just asked if there's any questions you had that you wanted answers to, that I did.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
But I have, I have downloaded my, my brain dump on him earlier this week, so.
Okay, so that's moving.
Yes.
That's good. And then the last question is really kind of a question for three of you anyway. I know I've been in contact with you a little bit, Neil, about Brad Virgo's driveway and what, if anything, can be done. We've got a neighbor over in the Bliss Edition, we approved a new home construction, and as I remember, the, the plans that we had, essentially, we're going to put a house inside a bowl that was burned on the sides to capture all the storm water and take care of it. I was out there just before the meeting today, and a lot of the snow is melting, so we can start seeing a little bit about what's under the snow, and we haven't been able to do for a while. But it appears that rather than creating a bowl, he's created a hill, and all of that water appears to be, anyway, coming over and it's been a winter of six inches of ice on this driveway that flows down. And Brad's been out there 30, 40 hours so far this winter trying to keep the ice from destroying his driveway and his garage and sidewalk down to his house is just almost impossible. So trying to figure out what can be done, who can, needs to be involved to help divert water away and protect the property in the future.
Are they going to house it or not?
Yeah, the house is now up. They don't have a certificate of occupancy, but it is there, the stock, place has been signed.
Yeah, I think, you know, once the snow's gone, you know, both, you know, three of us have had that conversation that we're going to have to get out there and look at what can be done. I mean, it's a very difficult site, because the, you know, if you go across the street and everything kind of drains, you know, across that street, you probably have, you know, consider the amount of snowfall we have and probably a good 30, 30, 30, 40 foot drop bed, you know, what degree of slope, you know, probably 40 degree of slope, coming down there, crossing the road, and then going down towards Big Marine Lake.
And nothing's happened in 30 years, it just happened for the first time this year.
No, that should be taken, that should be taken care of with the reading.
Has that house been built according to the plan that was approved?
But I think it's, it's more than the house. I think it's the quantity of snow, and if you look at the contours where it's going, the house is partially, you know, has to be partially responsible, and I know there are, you know, you know, Chuck is aware of it, you know, he's aware of the plan that has to be done, but I mean, right now, it's very difficult to tell what, for us to tell what's there on, you know, with all the snow.
It sounds like 60 truck loads of dirt were brought in to fill that property. It is not a bowl at, at any means. I would suggest that we look to see what was the approved plan versus what was constructed.
I agree with that.
Because I don't believe that what's constructed matches at all what I saw for plans.
Absolutely. I remember that, and I thought we kind of table that or shot them down, because impervious or something, they were going to, they were talking inches on their deck to squeak under the impervious, and that went through.
They are under the impervious.
Okay, so they figured something out on that? And I know they had some rain gardens and some drainage, and that was a big contention, you know? Yeah, if that's not what it's supposed to be.
And, you know, once, once that's all done, I know, you know, Jim wants to get back there, because the watershed district, you know, had, you know, their, their plan for managing the storm water, so I think we have to wait for everything to melt, but I think there's also, you know, driving by the maybe opportunities on the high side of the road, you know, for some ditch improvement, but then the question becomes, where do you move the water?
Yeah, but it's really, right now, what, what's that property doing and is it done correctly? There are other issues out there, and I know Brad is very appreciative of all three of you and the work that you've helped him deal with that, clearing out some of the snow, getting it out of there, so as it melted, it didn't create more of a problem, but that's a total mess. Something has to be done. So I appreciate you looking into it and getting at it and finding something.
Okay, any other questions for Neil? All right, moving on to general business then, discussion on the agreement with the Friends of Scandia Parks and Trails, with the Prairie Planting Misses from our work session.
Right, I, we have, the request was here that we drafted an agreement for the Prairie planting, you know, that was based, you know, similar to what was done for Swinson, you know, the Swinson Pollinator planting, and we have somewhat replicated that. Some of the language in terms of maintenance in the project was suggested earlier by Karen. You know, the only thing that I think in here that maybe of issue is one of insurance. You know, Andy and I had a conversation about this too, is whether, you know, do they really need general liability insurance for the whole thing, or really should it be, you know, during construction, in which case, you know, if our restoration is, is doing the work, you know, we could require their contractor during the time of construction to have liability insurance, but what's liability after that?
Well, what do Friends of the Park get 100, a million and a half insurance on? I mean, do they got a, I don't know, sort of planting?
What was done for insurance on the property of North?
That's exactly what was done.
Oh, really?
But the thing there, the property of North, because it was done by the 4H, which is U.S. University of Minnesota Extension, you know, it's just a simple add-on for them where it was nothing. But that's, you know, we, you know, replicated that as much as possible, but that, if there's something here, you know, I think we probably should have some insurance while the construction's going on, but after that, you know, Andy, you have comments?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Some combination of subcontractor insurance and FSPT insurance. I mean, I guess I don't, I never really looked into the cost of a premium of 1.5. That's, that mirrors the tort liability limits that the city has under state statute, so if there was something where the city was hauled into court, we can just be an additional insured on their insurance policy, and we don't have to make a claim under our insurance policy and pay that deductible and everything. So I'd be fine with tweaking this a little bit to just have it during the heavy construct, well, heavy construction period of that facility. Because it's going to be maintenance from, you know.
Right.
In perpetuity. So that wouldn't require much of anything.
So this clause wasn't there for their, for the agreement for that they did on the?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Okay. But they covered it by, via the University of Minnesota Extension?
Right, because it was before the 4H Club provided the insurance coverage. And, and because the 4H is part of the.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right.
Because that, well, it's interesting, okay. So I, I mean, potentially, they could work with the 4H Club or with the Scouters, even for this. Is that correct? To get covered?
Yeah, that is, that issue's not been raised by them, but yeah, I suppose, supposedly they could.
They're okay with this, the Friends with this contract?
I have not heard from them on this, but, I mean, this, you know, that's, you know, this is pretty much, you know, the insurance is probably the biggest issue.
So I, from a process standpoint, the council could approve the form of this agreement, and then if we need to, I think it's on the table for what might need to change with the insurance. We, I'd be comfortable with working with Neil to make that change and go forward, unless you want to bring it back again for, to look at that for council approval. And, and it's kind of hard now, because they haven't said anything one way or another, so they might not say anything and go forward.
So we can approve it? And then if they.
As modified to reflect whatever, right.
Yeah.
And then if you're approving it on that basis, we don't have to bring it back, you know, in another meeting and wait that time to bring it back here? Unless you'd like, like to be brought back.
So give us the liability.
Well, I.
Approve it.
I would say something in effect in Section 8 that FSPT agrees to maintain general liability insurance either through them, through their own organization or through collaboration with a potential subcontractor. And another question is, do you want it to be less than 1.5 million? Because that is the, the tort liability limit. We've done it where it's been a million before, I know. I can't remember, Neil, off the top of my head, what those have been, but those have been for kind of less.
But I would think that probably for restoration is carrying that amount of coverage.
You think that they are?
Just because of the number of public projects that they do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, I think what I would probably do is just say that either FSPT or, I don't know if I want to just name.
Or subcontractor.
Or subcontractor will carry this, so it doesn't put all the onus on FSPT to do it.
Okay, that would be good.
Is there anything in this contract, the city, if the city wants that property for something in the meantime, like a year after they plant it, that we just can't go in there and do what we want if we want back? The. I mean, is the city stuck with the, you know, what they're going to not stuck, but I don't want to use that word, but if they plant that, I mean, do we have to honor that for so many years or something? You know, just what if something comes up to where we need that property for something? If they're going to put a bunch of money in and plant it?
I just, I got the impression that they were just allowing them to plant it.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
No, I could be wrong.
It talks about short-term maintenance, long-term maintenance, at the end of three growing seasons, the Friends will have primary responsibility for maintenance in perpetuity, but that doesn't mean that you can't amend the contract. And if you need it for something that's almost a public infrastructure item, we could condemn the, your own property. I mean, you basically condemn this agreement, basically, so, I mean, I think there are ways to get around that.
Well, you could put a clause on Item 6, project duration, that the city has a right to terminate.
Yeah, and so projects, or Section 6 is, 6 is the, sort of the construction part of the project, and then whether it's there or somewhere else to talk about it, unilateral, like right to terminate this agreement, I don't.
If we don't need it, if we don't need it in there, I wouldn't put it in there. If we can do it anyway.
Sure.
At some point in time, I would just leave it at that.
And I think you can do it anyway, because it's your, you own the underlying property, you know?
Good, just leave it. Okay. Got that wording? Brenda?
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion? Approve Agreement Number 195 as drafted?
I'll second.
Pay for discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to. That's 195, is that what we just did?
We did 194.
It says 195 on this.
That shouldn't be, that was a, that should be agreement.
194 was a, planning commission.
Or approve agreement as, as drafted, okay, so that wasn't on there at all.
No.
All right, we took it off then. And that brings us then to discussion on Ordinance 195, adopting the 2018 fee schedule.
All right, this ordinance reflects really what we discussed at a couple work sessions in a row. We're repealing a number of ordinances that relate to the fees. The language in those ordinances has been incorporated. The other thing in there for anything that we didn't, that we, any specific ordinances or policies that adopt fees, there's, there's a general in that Section 3 repeal clause saying that this exhibit has all of our fees and everything else, even if it's not specifically referenced here, this takes precedent. So the fees are, you know, pretty much as we've discussed, you know, the changes, I think, the new fees are really, you know, two sets of changes, number one, for building permits, adding the, you know, specific permits for mechanical and plumbing instead of based upon valuation. There's some minor increases in building permit fees. The other change in here is that escrow deposits for a number of planning and zoning applications have been increased based upon what, you know, kind of like a three-year average for similar type items, so that we're not, you know, sitting there trying to recover, you know, hundreds or in case thousands of dollars afterwards in the, on and beyond the escrow agreement. The other thing that is added in here, and we will, this will be another item for the work session, but for the right-of-way ordinance that we're still working on, this does reference the fees that are in that right-of-way ordinance. So we won't have to go amend this once that gets approved. And then I think the intent is that, you know, annually, we can take a look at this and update this as part of the budget process, but this pulls everything from every policy, unwritten, you know, historical ordinance, and puts it all into one, you know, if somebody wants to know what our fees are, they'll all be here. And this is, you know, probably you'll see this in, in every other city.
Okay. Any questions on that?
We adopt Ordinance Number 195.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to approving summary publication of Ordinance 195. Is there a motion?
I move to. The resolution to approve the subject publication of 195. That's the one.
And Chris seconded it?
Yep.
In all in favor?
I heard that.
And that brings us to designating, the application for designating a primary contact for the MinDOT Landscape Partnership.
For us to proceed further with MinDOT, we would need to pass this resolution, really doing two things. Number one, saying that we'll sponsor the project and that you would designate me as kind of the authority authorized to apply for funding. That funding, you know, from Todd Carroll is in place. I did contact the property owners at all four corners, no objections. Lisa said she would gladly, she would gladly do maintenance for us, at least on her corner. She, you know, she raised a couple issues that, you know, the, you know, what was proposed was really a preliminary design, it really needs to get out and do the field work, because there are some questions about, you know, where there are culverts, where the water flows, what do we do with the snowmobile trail? But a lot of that, you know, once we say we're going to go, the landscape designer will, can take care of that.
Cool.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Questions on that? Okay, then is there a motion to approve?
I guess I would move to approve Resolution 03-20-18-03, authorizing application for designating the primary contact for the MinDOT Landscape Partnership application.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the cooperative agreement with Washington County on the bold planning software.
Washington County had a change of heart, so to speak, and, you know, originally, this was a. was a joint powers agreement, and now amazingly, it's a cooper, cooperative agreement.
At least in the heading, it is.
At least in the heading, you have to go ahead, Andy, you can speak to that.
Yeah, well, I don't know if you, I got pulled up here myself, I introduce it, Neil, but...
But, you know, the Bold Planning Software, we've talked about it, you know, this is, you know, some cloud-based software that we will be able to use, you know, the county has funding to pay for it. If you look at it, you know, they're committed, but if the funding disappears, they're out of it. And if you look at, you know, boy, what's the worst-case scenario for the city? I mean, the worst-case scenario in my mind is, I think the cost for Bold Planning is about thirty dollars, or $300 a year, so we could spend $300 and stay there. Or the other scenario is you print it out, and we've got, you know, paper documents which are probably, you know, vastly better than we have right now. So, I mean, you know, you know, it's, I think it's, it's a good start, I think, you know, for Mike, it'll be, you know, a good project to, you know, to get on board, but, you know, there's a huge amount of value to it. You know, Andy had some concerns about the language, but...
And I don't really have anything to add, because it's better than what you have now. The, the county has this thing about always doing joint powers agreements for everything, and if the county goes out and gets a piece of software or something and then sort of lends it out to the member communities in the county, they do that under a joint powers agreement, while the city isn't doing anything besides just using the service that the county is acquiring. So in our firm, we had, we rose that, we pointed that out, and they changed it to a cooperative agreement, but then the, the actual text of the document didn't really change at all, there's still reference to the joint powers, state statute and everything. So it's, it's a, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, so I think we just go forward. Neil pointed out correctly, the, you know, you can just easily do a bypass around that if there's a push comes to shove.
Okay. So is there a recommendation to approve the...
Cooperative agreement.
Cooperative agreement.
Yeah, I move we approve the cooperative agreement with Washington County. Second.
Further discussion?
Just I saw the, you said there'd be significant staff time for data entry and stuff like...
Well, you know, some of it, you, you have to build, you know, like, who are our contacts? You know, that contact information?
It's kind of the same as what you just did for your fee schedule, gathering all your information, putting it in one location, so...
Yeah, I think one of the nice thing is, you know, it's, it's more of the contact information, but after that, you know, for example, if, you know, for some step in your emergency operation plan, a lot of it's based upon drop-down menus, you know, somebody's going to have to sit there and say, you know, of the 20 items, these six apply to Scandia, check the boxes, and they're in your plan and move on. So it's going to take some time to work through.
Any other comments? Are we voting?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Proposal for tree trimming?
Mayor, council members, the proposal before you is to help with the 2018 road project. The vehicles going through that site, the milling machines, the dump trucks and so forth will need extra height to dump loads and fill loads and so on and so forth, so it's really a request to have tree work done that the city staff cannot perform.
This has been done in past years, we've hired someone to come in and do this?
On my unlimited knowledge, not being here for a lot of the other projects, is that work has been done along roads, especially for ditching and road improvements in that area and that aspect of it, to clear out right-of-way, to put in extra culverts and do extra ditching and so on and so forth.
Helkey did a bunch one time, I remember, a few years ago.
Yeah.
But for this, the tree trimming, you know, which I've been on here?
For here, what we're looking at is all 12 miles that we're going to work on for somebody to go up and basically clear all the limbs up to 20, up to 20 feet. You know, our guys can get the lower limbs, but I mean, you know, unless we're going around with a bucket truck, I know we've rented a bucket truck in Chikara in the past, but, you know, operating that is not, I think, our, we're not highly skilled at it. I mean, you know, we can do it, but we're not highly skilled where we can do it very efficiently, so I think this is the best approach.
But this will be different than we've done before, then, that's my question.
We have not done a major road project like this before.
We've done this in the past with hiring Helkey's tree service for other road projects.
Didn't you want to bid this, or what's the deal with him? Local bidder?
The local bidder there is Balsam Tree. I didn't go through Helkey this time because I've called them six times for help in the past, and I've gotten no return calls, so, you know, they want to be on board, they have to be on board.
Okay. So someone might make a motion, the recommendation is to accept the proposal from uppercut tree service.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the bid from uppercut tree services for 15.5.
Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second.
You're seconding it?
Yes.
Further discussion, I have a question, how can there possibly be such a wide variance in what they're asking?
Yeah, once, four times, and then the other.
I did call them, call back to the Hugo Tree and ask them that question, and their response to me, because I was checking to make sure that, that the wages they were paying were their standard wages, that they paid their employees, they said the biggest issue for them was traffic control. My thought is that they probably didn't really look through the area as well as the other two companies did to see what was out there, because we have large stretches of road that do not have any overhanging trees at all, for instance, Oak Hill. So I think they just really didn't do their homework to come out and really view it well. I think they probably went through one section and felt it was all the same way. If you go through 199 and Oxboro area and so on and so forth, that's...
Where's, where's uppercut located?
Uppercut is located Forest Lake.
We have a tree service right here in Scandia, Helkey Tree Service, and they've got a new, very expensive piece of equipment that'll go up 70 feet. It's really a nice rig.
That's what Adam was saying, they don't get back to it, they don't get back to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, with your balsam, and they're right over there.
There's two different ones, Helkey and balsam.
Yeah.
Hanging man, the hanging balsam's more than twice as expensive as...
So you think you're going to have a problem with this bid if he, if he down the road realizes he underbid, or is, do you think he underbid?
No, I don't think he did. I think he understood exactly what he's getting into.
Okay.
I did drive it with Balsam, and I drove it with uppercut tree, and that's why I'm guessing Hugo, because I didn't drive it with them, is they probably thought, they looked at the one area and thought, oh my gosh, it's all like this, we're going to have to have people in on every curve and all the traffic control and everything else, that was their explanation for the high prices, traffic control. But no, I don't think they will, because, and if you read their letter, I don't know if you read that letter yet.
Yeah, they absolutely.
They're, they've done work for White Bear, Forest Lake, In Town, several other communities, Oakdale, I can't think of the other ones right offhand, but they've done a lot of work.
They look solid for what it...
He's saying that if there's a dead branch above 20 feet, they'll remove that for no charge, so...
Okay, is there then, we have a motion, we have a second, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us up to discussion on the draft of the spring newsletter. Is there any? Looked good to me, I thought there was lots in there this time that I think will be...
The only question I had on the calendar, I know we talked about the open for this this meeting on April 19th, is that something we would want in the calendar?
You know, I'm not sure whether, you know, because the thing is, because we're bright and breakfast, and I thought we were, that was going to be by invite to businesses, when you open up to the whole community, you put in here, you're opening in, up to the whole community in my regard, so I didn't think that was appropriate.
Okay, that's fine.
I thought about it.
Okay, that's fine. The only thing that I really stood out in some of the election stuff, but then I saw further on, you got to do great detail on the election, so I didn't have to worry about it on the calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, looks good.
Then let's smooth it up, do we need a motion on that? Is there a motion then to accept the spring newsletter as drafted?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brings us to the comments to the Public Utilities Commission regarding Frontier.
Steve?
We talked at our, our work session that the Public Utilities Commission is taking public comment on investigation that they're pursuing and asked if we could, as a community, as a city, make an official response on behalf of the citizens, so Neil went through and gathered some facts based on the community survey that we put together this summer, drafted a nice paragraph. I did have some folks on our internet focus group take a look at it, we did a little minor wordsmithing to it, but I would like to ask us to approve that Neil submit those comments on our behalf.
I think it's very, very database.
I think the only other question I have is if you would ask the major business owners along 97 about the quality of their service, to submit that as well? Because there's actually businesses in downtown Scandia that get five big things for this. Right, that's untenable for a business.
Yeah, a lot of the discussion that we had is that there are lots of people who have expressed a different opinion about what the level of service are in many different ways, and when we talked at the work session, we wanted to make sure that we were going off of facts that we could substantiate, things we had heard.
Right, and that's why I was wondering, you could at least ask business leaders, what service are you getting? Just literally, what is the level of service you are receiving at a business, at a major trunk like 97? I think that would be rather eye-opening.
I think we'll be doing some of that as part of our work to try to figure out what we can do to improve service to the community, but in terms of responding to the public utilities request for comment on the investigation...
But I think for any of those businesses, they should be encouraged to also submit comments. I think comments are due by the end of May.
Right.
And I would encourage anybody and everybody to submit those comments.
Which I'll be strongly committed, because the only way you get service for Frontier is being very aggressive.
Exactly.
I love...
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion then to submit the comments as drafted?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And that brings us to Economic Development Authority facade improvement program.
The EDA at their last meeting, you know, kind of approved a facade improvement program that would utilize the $20,000 that was allocated in the 2018 budget. The, you know, the terms are, you know, are here, you know, basically a loan up to $5,000, payable over 10 years at 1% interest for certain eligible improvements that will be, you know, exterior to the building. I think one of the things in there, Andy and I had a conversation about this, and really what, you know, what it requires is that, in here, that before, you know, there's a comment in here that before the work commences, that there will be a repayment agreement. The form of that, you know, once something comes in, we will work with either Andy as legal counsel or potentially, you know, the bank to come up with the proper form, and the intent would be that we would have, you know, use, you know, the property or the building as security for the improvement, but we would take a secondary position to any, you know, primary mortgage on the property. So this is just for, you know, the, you know, council's comments.
You have to put that money aside for that, then, you can't use it for anything else?
Right.
And it's completely voluntary for the businesses?
Yes. If they would, if they would like to, it's, it's there to take advantage of, and we'll just keep this pool rolling.
Right.
I mean, when you look at it, you know, to, if we can loan money out at 1%, we're getting better than we're getting on our money market. So we're getting money, better than our money market, plus we're enhancing the tax base of the community, so it's a good investment.
Any questions? And there was a motion to approve the program as drafted by the EDA.
So moved.
Conflict of interest for me. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Why is it a conflict?
It's on the EDA, you know?
No, it's not a conflict.
It's not a conflict.
They're not gaining anything from it.
I'm advocating.
Right, so you should go ahead and...
As a member of the EDA, I don't make motions.
You move, and you said Bob seconds, and all in favor? Aye. It's like the kid who says, I keep hold for myself. Class president. Discussion on application to Brandon Community Broadband Resource Program for consulting assistance.
Okay.
Take that, do you take that too, Steve?
The Blended Foundation supports projects for communities trying to investigate how to improve internet services in their communities. They have a grant where they will provide consult outside, independent consulting resources up to 32 hours free of charge to do that, and as part of the application, some of the questions include, who are supporting partners, and I would like to ask that the city be a supporting partner on that application so that we can get some assistance from the outside to help us.
How would you envision that being used?
Well, they have a gentleman who, who's done this a lot for communities in the area, Bill Coleman, I believe, he lives in the area, consults with them, he'd come in, talk to our group about what, what we're trying to do, and help us understand what other communities have done, what sorts of things are possible, and try to help us figure out how we can work through the woods here on this, and free consulting advice.
Seems like a strange departure for the Blended Foundation, it's a paper company.
They are.
Well, you know, they have a big initiative towards rural broadband, you know, and at our EDA meeting, Chris Haying from the Washington County EDA Director, you know, spoke and suggested that we apply for this, and one of the things that he mentioned is that, you know, when Sunrise Township in Chisago County, their broadband application to the state, you know, this gentleman, you know, the consultant that, you know, would be made available, was a person who kind of helped work through that process and lined up, you know, really between, you know, really made the partnership between the telephone company, the community, and the carrier, and the state indeed, to make that happen. So, I mean, if we're looking for that in the future, it'd be nice just to be able to have, you know, that, that amount of, I think it's up to 32 hours of free consulting time. Are you going to spearhead that?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we proceed with that consulting option. One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Steve.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm going to back up for just a minute while we're kind of still on this, and can I ask you to come forward and identify who you are? Normally, we do that when people speak to us, and so we have it for our record.
Sure, my name's Elizabeth Moore, and I'm off of 236th Street. So, yeah, and we, I work from home, the only reason I can live here is because I work from home, and Frontier has been painful for the last 14 years, so I feel you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and that then brings us to our summary of the results of the closed session, and I have a statement to read on that. I have the summary to read.
You have it.
I have it. I had it set aside. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, Subdivision 3C.2, which allows a public body to close a meeting to review confidential or protected non-public appraisal data under the Minnesota Data Practices Act. The council went into closed session at the March 7, 2018 work session to discuss the potential sale of a city-owned lot located between 21710 and 21750 Olinda Lane North, parcel identification number 1403220220009. After review of the appraisal and discussion, the council voted, subject to review by legal counsel, to give the adjoining property owners the opportunity for a period of time to be determined to purchase the property at the appraised value. Andy, do you want to speak to that as your review as legal counsel?
And I apologize for the dryness of what you just read, but I think only attorney could write that, probably.
Lots of numbers, that's all.
Yes. So, and I think this sort of segues into Part L on our agenda. I've talked with Neil about this and helped out with the closed session... I've talked with Neil about this and helped out with the closed session script before you went into closed session at the work session and this one you just read now, Mayor. And I did a review of the Competitive Bidding Act, and normally when you buy equipment, do construction projects on a large scale, you have to competitively bid that, get the best deal. The same is not true if you have property that you are selling. That is something that you can do on the open market, what have you. And you can probably understand that, because you may have some city-owned property for a project, just hypothetically, that you want to sell to a certain developer, a certain development. If it was otherwise, you'd have to take the best bid on that property, and sometimes you don't want that, actually. It's kind of counterintuitive. So you are not forced to put it in a public bidding situation, you're not forced to do like some sort of online auction or something. You can do that, you don't have to. You can do the right of first option, right of first refusal to the neighbors, one or both, but you can't favor one neighbor over the other. You can't, can't make it so one, one person maybe gets more land in artificial way. And so I told Neil we could easily draft something that would, that would provide a right of first option or right of first refusal, whether you divvy up the land 50-50 and then they, it goes to each property, or, or you give, you sell the entire portion to one or the other, based on a competitive process with those two, that'd be fine, before you open it up for more public situation for selling that. So it's really, you have a lot of flexibility with how to do this.
How would we do a competitive bid between the two landowners?
Well, you would, you would have some sort of situation where, you know, if you try to sell it to like a third party, I'm thinking more of the right of first refusal aspect, then you could ask them to match the price that you receive from the third party. And if they're not willing to match that, then it goes to the third party. You could have it where if they, if they both decide to match a price you get from somebody else, who's gonna win in that determination? Who's gonna give you the best deal? So that's, that's the sort of thing, if you want to get, that's a little more complex versus just offering it, and then if they turn it down, then go to the public with it.
I think it's one of the things we talked about the work session. I think the intent was to see whether we could, you know, authorize you to draft an agreement, giving them an option, but then if that was not exercised, then we could talk about what's the next step.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we did that, since it's a single parcel, you've got two people essentially saying, yeah, we won it. Who's responsible for the last one?
Mr. Flora. Last one. We would, I think, have to do a minor subdivision.
That would just be a property line adjustment.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, line adjustment.
Which is relatively simple thing.
But it would have to be surveyed, so you know where to put the lot line. I mean, you're dividing it up between two people, so it has to be.
Right down the middle.
If that be surveyed, it'd have to be illegal right now.
Yeah, because generally when they do a lot line adjustment, you would have the existing legal descriptions and then the two, the new legal descriptions.
Yep.
You're on a survey.
Yeah, and if I were.
You know, we could have the, you know, in addition to the price, have the.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Great.
Because they.
What were you gonna say? They're reading each other's minds and not telling us what they're gonna say.
Buyer's responsible for the cost of the survey.
That's what I was gonna say. You know, and, and, and the, the buyers might want to do some type of review and environmental review, who knows? I don't know, but that, all that would get rolled into the cost that they're responsible for. You know, there'd be a closing, not really a closing, sit down, but just a, a date where it's gonna be transferred. So you could all draw that up.
You can't, Terry, why don't you come up here and tell us who you are?
Yeah, Terry, go around, I'm one of the adjacent landowners. So the question would be, would the only option be to split that property? Or would it be that if, if there's, there's Mr. Caldwell on one side and us on the other, would it be if one of the two of us wanted to meet the appraised value?
Right.
And then, then it would be the entire piece of property? But it wouldn't have to be split between the two of us? Is that true? We would have that option?
If you both want it.
If we both want it.
Yeah, if you both want it, then it would be splitting it, right?
Sure.
But, yeah, I think that was, that was said, but yes?
Thanks.
And then, if they both want the whole thing?
Then it goes up for auction.
Then it goes up for auction.
We'll work it out. Jim and I have been talking about it.
Okay.
Well, if you're giving them the first right of refusal, one could buy it, the other could buy it, they could each get half, one could get a third, you know, they could do what they want, probably, no matter how they're. And I think what we're talking about right here is, are we gonna offer it to them for the appraised value?
Right, and then authorize Andy to, you know, create that agreement.
Yeah. Okay.
And the data that I would have to know is how are the, what is the deal that the neighbors are gonna come up with? Who wants what? So.
So you'd have to talk with them, obviously.
When would we find out what the appraised value is?
We actually, did they not know?
No.
Okay.
I think once we authorize Andy to create the agreement and to start the process.
Then you would know.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to have Andy move forward with a drawing up an agreement to sell this parcel, offer this first parcel for first right of refusal to the adjacent landowners?
And the other thing to throw into that for the purchase prices would be the fees to, for me to do that.
Right. That would be for the, for the appraised value plus any survey or additional work that needs to be done, including the attorney fees.
And fees, yeah.
Okay. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that takes care of K and L, which brings us to Wind in the Pines Park. What to be done about Wind in the Pines Park?
I would be, I'll throw it out there, I'd be willing to make a motion to request the, the city put together plans for closing the parking lot and present that information to us at our work session on the 4th.
I would like to see included in that where the access points for Wind in the Pines would be for people to, so that they could still use the park.
For walking in.
For walking in, right. I mean, technically, people could park on 95, which is legal, and walk through the parking lot and do just what they've been doing and creating the problems. That's.
Or get dropped off, whatever.
Or get dropped off, right, or parking somewhere around 200, whatever, but.
I'm for trying it, closing the parking lot, I guess. I have some reservations and some concerns. You know, if there's bad people using the park, I don't want to be in there either, you know, but that whole liability thing, I mean, if you're on somebody's property illegal and you get hurt, the first thing the judge is gonna say is, you shouldn't have been there anyway. That, you know, that kind of stuff, it goes through my mind, but I'm all for shutting down the parking lot and trying it anyway, we gotta do what we can.
Are we gonna put a time limit on it?
I have a question for Steve, because you said for the city to draw up plans, so are you recommending closing the parking lot, or are you recommending that they just draw up plans and we vote on it at a later date?
I'm, I'm recommending the latter. Put plans together for what do we take to close it down, so we understand what the expenses are, what we'd be doing, would be moving the lot, would be barricading it, what are the access, what do we want to do? Get a plan together so we can review it and decide, go ahead and do it or not.
I'll second that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, too. Any further discussion on that?
I guess I have one, one comment, I guess, more off of what Jim said earlier, like whose responsibility it is on his side. I guess it all, if somebody is breaking the law, it's different with this, because it's a different person every time. But you're saying like, you got a property owner, two property owners, one keeps on trespassing. It falls back on the law enforcement to enforce it. If they, they get cited, they keep doing it, they could be arrested. I could arrest people down there if I find them. It's a witness misdemeanor. So that would be my standpoint on it, and I can't, and I, don't get me wrong, that's just fine with me, but I, I guess I'm looking at it in the aspect of, I guess, Mr. House, that it's so many different people that blanket enforcement hasn't been working, so I guess that was just kind of reiterated. Oh, it all, it all falls back on the responsibility of me and the county to enforce it, and he is taking every step legally that he can do.
Right.
Without, we'll be drafting his property, so.
Yeah.
I hope that kind of answers a little bit of what you're kind of looking for.
I think it would be also nice to know, the answer to the gentleman's question from a legal perspective, if someone comes across through our park, goes onto his property and hurts themselves, who's liable? Is it his insurance, or is it ours, or is it the perpetrator who's trespassing? And you had indicated you might need to do some research on that. I'd like to understand the answer to that.
And that would be good to have that as part for, for that as well, as maybe part of Adam's report or a separate report.
It's not gonna change what. Exactly. If there's an issue down there, whether who's liable.
No, that's just.
We need to do something, so.
But just to understand, maybe, answer the question.
Okay, are we putting any, well, we'll wait till for Adam's report, then we can talk about it.
We'll have a work session agenda.
Yeah. Okay, then is, do we, let's have a, let's have a, we had a motion, has a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Then is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.